Baseball is back in Jacksonville. Jumbo shrimp owner Ken Babbie with us to open up about a return to normal following pandemic restrictions, even cancellations the past two years. What he hopes for fans in 2022. People in Jacksonville hope the return of curbside recycling isn't smoke and mirrors with other solid waste troubles on the way. The city council president will be with us today. And it's another trip to Tallahassee for state lawmakers. A local view on the need to redraw new maps in congressional districts going for a special session on This Week in Jacksonville. And thank you for joining us today. Sam Newby, the city council president here in Jacksonville, joining us in studio. We've heard a lot about redistricting and certainly that on the state level, the congressional side, but that happened in Jacksonville as well. Tell us about that process for redistricting happens every 10 years or so, right?
Right. First of all, thank you for having me on the show. Well, it actually started 14 months ago and it started under former president Huzery. And then it fell in my lap and actually council, I mean Dennis Garrett was the first chairman. And then when I became president, I appointed Aaron Bowman. Then it came to the roof chair, Brennan Priestley Jackson.
The process was this, are there substantial changes to the council districts or anything like that? And what came out of this? Because the vote, as I understand it, was pretty clear at the end, right?
Yeah, it was 18-1. It wasn't that many changes. It was a little bit of change because, you know, according to the charter, they go by the total population and they divide it up with the 14 districts. And so you got to have, each district got to have 71,000, you know, 5% more, 5% less. So that's how we kind of had to form it.
All right. Any reaction to some of the pushback saying, hey, this process wasn't the way it should have been? I mean, any of your insights to the folks who criticized it?
Well, it was a little pushback, of course, but I think it was a great process. I think it was a great product. And, you know, I was kind of amazed that it was a lot of pushback because, you know, 10 years ago, there was no controversy. And 10 years ago with redistricting, we actually now produce seven African-American council members. I know the pushback was, they say we're going to delete the African-American vote, but I don't see that. Like I said, it's seven African-American council members. And actually, the president and vice president and roof chair are African-American.
Yeah, so more than a third of those 19 seats, as you point out. All right, let's shift topics a little bit. Give me a reaction to some disparaging comments that were made about Jacksonville by a national media figure, Brian Kilmeade on Fox. He called the city a mess that needs to be revitalized and said city leaders should be embarrassed. I know one of your colleagues, Councilman Matt Carlucci, got defensive. Councilwoman Leanna Cumber said, agreeing to an extent, saying, hey, we're a decade behind. What's your view on that criticism?
Well, I was surprised with them comments. I think Jacksonville is definitely moving in the right direction. We are the fastest, fourth fastest growing city in the country. We have over 40 families a week are moving to Jacksonville with all the development downtown. I'm really was surprised about the comments.
If you had a chance to speak directly to that particular commentator, what would you say?
I would just tell him, he needs to really just come and just see what the great things that we're doing and look at the great people. And I think our greatest asset is the actually people of Jacksonville.
So he'd need to meet some of those.
You would need to meet some of them.
As I understand, lives in the region, so.
Should, should know, right? Correct.
I want to talk about curbside pickup restored for recycling. We saw that this week. We went out, we saw some of that happening, but now there's some concerns about other solid waste, the cost of this, the future of the program. We understand it's a very small component, but one neighborhood showing us, hey, we've got yard debris that's been out here for, you know, weeks and weeks. What would you say to folks who are still concerned about this? Six months they went without the recycling.
Well, I'm concerned also, but I just say just to be a little patient, you know, this is not just Jacksonville. This is all over the country. You know, I serve on the board of directors for the Florida cities and we all talk about this and so, but I think Jacksonville is moving in the right direction. You know, part of the problem is it's hard to hire CDL drivers, so just there's not enough drivers out. And so that's part of the problem, but I think we're moving in the right direction and I'm looking forward for one day to be unresolved.
I can totally appreciate what you just said about, hey, this is not just this one. Lots of companies, municipalities are having issues with staffing. So what have you heard? Is the city fully staffed when it comes to solid waste removal?
It's not totally fully staffed, but the city is really trying to be fully staffed. Like I say, part of the problem is it's just not enough CDL drivers here in Jacksonville.
Well, costs go up when you have to recruit at a different level, right?
Exactly, because I know at one time the average cost, well, I think it was about $16 an hour. Now it's all the way up to about $24 an hour. Then I know in some of the halls, they're actually paying a $5,000 signing bonus. So that's going to, you know, increase though then. So the city budget is going to have to increase.
Yeah, something people certainly are going to be talking about as you go through that process for budgeting at a higher level. This is certainly something people will talk about. Jacksonville Jaguars, of course, the highest profile sports team in the region professionally. Also a perennial loser over the last decade, which is tough. Only one winning season since 2008. The Jaguars stadium is going to be the oldest in the NFL once Buffalo has their new location built. So the team owner, Shot Con, he's interested in a new stadium or a significant remodel. Do you favor that? How much should the city pay when it comes to that? Because as we've seen, these stadium upgrades or new stadiums, they cost a lot of money.
Well, first of all, we have to think about this. There's only 30 NFL teams in the whole country. Well, the whole world. And so, and actually two of them is in one city. So actually only 29 cities in America has a team and we're one of them. So with that, you know, it's take costs, you know, to be one of the 29 cities and the economic development that the Jaguars bring, I think is definitely worth redoing the stadium.
That hasn't been an ask yet.
It had been.
You can see it coming, right?
I can see it coming down the line.
The opposite side of that is, hey, NFL owners, they're making all this money, so pay for it on your own. Do you believe there needs to be that, that public partnership with a private entity like that?
I do believe that. And Shot Con had, the Jaguars has been a good partner with the city of Jacksonville. We hadn't done the whole project, so, and I'm sure that he will make some improvements.
There's Jags fans out there saying, hey, only if the team can improve, get to the playoffs, whatever. That's a harder formula to crack.
Right. We have nothing to do with that. And I think that the team is moving forward. I think one day we would definitely have a better, a better product on the field.
Yeah, fans are hoping for it. I know draft is coming up, end of this month. One more topic before we run out of time here. Talk about the Confederate monument removal, most prominent of them, that tribute to the women of the Southern Confederacy. Will that be removed? Do you favor it happening? And I know there's some new legislation. We even heard Aaron Bowman talking about, hey, there's something coming. I can't tell you details yet.
Well, I pointed Councilman Bowman to this and it is something coming that we really can't talk about. And I think that's going to be the formula for this. And just like I always say, this is not a city council or a mayor. It's city leaders and the whole community, we need to get together and solve this problem.
A year ago, the mayor's office put through some legislation and ultimately got turned down. But was that more associated with the price tag of removing that? It was more than a million dollars?
For me, the reason why, for me was the price tag. It was 1.4 million. And that time, we needed to use that for other different things, you know, with crime and other things in the city. So I couldn't see using 1.4 million to take down a statue when we have so many other needs.
Councilman Matt Carlucci has talked about, hey, we could do this and maybe cap the amount. I heard even half a million dollars. Does that change an overall council perspective on what needs to happen?
Well, I can't speak for my other colleagues, but I just can't see when the mayor says it's going to be, the administration says it's going to be 1.2, so all the $500,000, it's not going to be enough.
Yeah, okay, all right. Council President Sam Newby, thank you so much. We covered a wide range of topics there. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
All right, coming up next, statewide decision concerning national politics. Florida's special legislative session ahead to sort out congressional districts. State Representative Cord Bird joins us next on This Week in Jacksonville. Don't go anywhere.
It's the weekend and we know accidents can happen anytime. That's why we're here for you 24/7. Don't wait until Monday. Call Farin Farah.
Looks like sun, looks like fun, but before you even know, here comes rain. Where did it come from? Why do I even live here? Don't let weather ruin plans. There's only one way to prepare. Always watching, always tracking. Download our free app today.
Hey, Mike Backs, you're for outdoor, man.
Mike.
What?
Really?
Mike.
Dad, dad.
Come on.
Mike.
What?
Really?
Mike.
Dad, dad.
Come on.
Mike.
Seriously?
Trick.
One, two, one, two, three.
Fourth on New Year's.
I was alone.
You're with me, honey.
Which is alone adjacent.
Weeknights at 8 and 8:30 on Channel 4, the local station.
For over 20 years, Subaru of Jacksonville has made the customer experience our top priority. This focus has earned us dealer raters dealer of the year time and time again. And Subaru of Jacksonville is here to help you find the perfect Subaru. Take advantage of great pricing and interest rates starting at just 1.9% on new 22 Subaru models, plus a complimentary national lifetime warranty or two years maintenance. Experience the Subaru of Jacksonville difference. Your favorite Subaru dealership for a generation and counting.
Drive a Subaru. You'll buy a Subaru.
Ladies and gentlemen, start your engines.
Looking for wide open beaches and plenty of exciting ways to have fun? Daytona Beach is the place. So start planning your trip today at daytonabeach.com and we'll see you at the finish line.
Pool season savings are coming in hot at our four day sale event with 10 to 15% off storewide, including pool automation and 15% off variable speed pumps. Plus save extra on pool cleaners. Stop in your locally owned pinch a penny for the best deals this pool season, April 7th through 10th.
America, home of the free. Free is our favorite word.
Two treadmills.
Like buy one, get one free. We get it.
We're not doing that.
I'm just saying, this is like.
You're going to attack me?
Best decision of my life.
That's why at Morgan and Morgan, our fee is free. That means you don't pay anything unless we win your case. Injured, call Morgan and Morgan.
Let's go!
ForThePeople.com.
I am a business owner with a teenager. Mercy. I count on News for Jax to get answers to questions I care about most, like when John Garn tracks storms right to my street so I can keep my 16-year-old safe and reporters live until the danger has passed. No sensationalism, no hype. They hold people accountable and offer solutions, even help get laws changed for all of us. Making it worth my time to watch every single day. They are who they've always been. News for Jax on Channel 4, the local station.
You're watching This Week in Jacksonville with Kent Justice.
Thanks for staying with us today. So lawmakers in Florida completed their legislative session in the mandate for passing a state budget. They also completed their duty to compose congressional maps, but Governor Ron DeSantis vetoed them. The House and Senate will get back to work in the state Capitol right after Easter for a special session. And so joining us right now, State Representative Cord Bird from Neptune Beach. Mr. Bird, also part of the redistricting process during that regular 60-day session. Briefly explain, I guess, the process now. And why when Republicans control the House, Republicans control the Senate, and there's a Republican in the executive office there, that there's not agreement on these congressional maps?
Sure. Well, it's good to be with you. And we have two constitutional requirements. One is to pass a balanced budget, which we do every year. And then the other one is every 10 years conduct redistricting, which we did. And the state House and Senate maps have been approved by the Florida Supreme Court. The conflict now is over the congressional maps. And quite frankly, there's a legal dispute between the maps that the legislature passed and that the governor is asking for.
Yeah, what is that, I guess? And why is there conflict considering each of those branches, I guess, the two legislative houses and the governor's office, same party?
Sure. So the equal protection clause of the 14th amendment says that we can't, that it's illegal to pass laws based upon race. And that's the governor's position and the position that I took. I actually voted against the legislative maps and voted in agreement, or voted in agreement with the governor. And so there is a legal dispute. And over the last, so in 2015, the Florida Supreme Court ruled on the state constitutional fair district amendments. That is what the legislature is focusing on, where the governor is focusing on the equal protection clause of the 14th amendment.
All right, so we know that the ear of the sides. How do you come to an agreement? I know this is a special session right after Easter, but how do you find compromise?
Well, fortunately, the United States Supreme Court recently in an Alabama case and then a few weeks ago in a Wisconsin case, their logic and their reasoning in these recent court cases side with where the governor's legal position is. So I think that will be, will ultimately make the decision is that we follow the trend of what the United States Supreme Court has said in cases that have come out since we did the last redistricting in 2012.
So I talked with our producers about, we're not going to show all the maps, you know, because it can get confusing if you even know which map you're talking about. But in general, Congressional District 5 is Congressman Al Lawson represents that now. It stretches from Jacksonville through the north part of the state, all the way over to Tallahassee. That's the current district. Why was that set up that way? And that goes back to 2015 or that ruling that you just mentioned. And why should it look differently?
Sure. So you're absolutely right. That the current district that Representative Lawson represents was decided by the Florida Supreme Court in 2015. There have been cases that have come out subsequently that would allow for a legal argument that that is no longer proper under the United States Constitution and that it was drawn with an improper intent based upon, for racial reasons.
And that's true when you call it a minority access district or whatever the right phrase is there?
Correct, correct. And this is a, it's a very technical area of the law. You're dealing with the Federal Voting Rights Act. You're dealing with the federal constitution, state constitutional provisions. And there is a legitimate legal dispute and there are good folks on both sides of that discussion that have a disagreement. And the governor's position is that we follow the United States Constitution and that ultimately we need to take this to the courts and let them decide.
So shouldn't it be as simple? There's somebody out there watching right now saying, this should be as simple as everybody in this city, that's a district, or a geographic area that's really simple to figure out. Is that inaccurate?
It should be. It should be that simple. But because of the Voting Rights Act, we have developed over the last 60 years or so, that was passed in the 60s. There's been case law that has directed states to do certain things and that some of those, there's a position that those, that time has passed and that we no longer need to, you know, connect minority voters in Jacksonville with minority voters in Tallahassee, that that violates the federal equal protection.
So I didn't intend to like leave the hardest questions to the yent. But as we wrap up here, I know something Congressman Lawson has said in the wake of this veto by the governor, other, and certainly Democrats have said, hey, this seems like trying to take the power of the African-American or minority vote away. Why do you feel that that's not the case?
Well, once again, and I keep, I keep repeating myself, going back to the equal protection clause that says that a state cannot draw a district based upon race without a compelling state interest. There is, there's not a compelling state interest to join voters of whatever race from Jacksonville with Tallahassee. The district should be drawn compactly with communities of interest taken into consideration. And that district, I think violates the federal law and the courts will ultimately make that determination.
A lot of us will be wondering how this all sorts itself out. That's coming up. Special legislative session coming up here later this month. State Representative Cord Bird, thanks.
Great, thank you. Good to be with you.
So one day after a national champion was crowned in men's basketball, spring was sprung with the start of the baseball season. The owner of the Jacksonville Jumbo Shrimp is with us next on This Week in Jacksonville.
Being injured in an accident is only the beginning of your problems. Don't throw away your one shot at compensation. Make it count. Farin Farah.
It's so musty in here.
Everybody, damp bread. Damp bread attracts and traps excess moisture, eliminating the source of musty odors.
Show your home some love with fresh new furniture from Bears. During the final days of our Love Your Home event, Bears Furniture can help you revive and restore with the lowest prices guaranteed. You'll find a huge in-stock inventory on all the top name brands with more items arriving daily. And with instant discounts up to $1,000 or more, the more you buy, the more you save. There's no limit. Love your home, love the savings for one final week, only at Bears Furniture. Live beautifully.
Why would you buy life insurance from anyone else when Senior Life gives you all your money back? It's simple. When other companies say they save you a percent of your money, Senior Life says, we give it all back. That's right. With return of premium life insurance from Senior Life, we don't save you a percent of your money. We give it all back, 100%. It works like this. If you pass away while you're insured, your loved ones get a check for the coverage amount you chose. But if you're still living at the end of the term, you get back all the money you paid, guaranteed. Spend it any way you wish. While others may talk about saving you money, Senior Life is the only one giving it all back. Return of premium term life insurance gives you protection if you need it and 100% cash back if you don't. Get all your money back with return of premium life insurance from Senior Life. Call 800-905-9095 now for free information. You have no obligation. Call now.
What's the latest buzz? It's the Ford Spring Sales Event. Get great offers on the trucks people are talking about, like Ford F-150, a true workhorse with the capability to haul or tow more than ever. And the powerful Ford Ranger, where hustle meets muscle. Don't wait. Find out what all the buzz is about during the Ford Spring Sales Event. Get rates as low as 0.9% plus 500 bonus cash or custom order your F-150 with 1,000 retail order bonus cash.
After practicing for 30 years in this community, we have grown, but we have not outgrown the size of our heart and our family. It's surely true that, you know, a law firm can be too big. It can be too big to feel personal. And we always want our clients to feel that they're at home, that they're being treated like family. And that's going to be more than one lawyer. That's going to be an entire team. That's how we get our best results.
Unlock exclusive news stories. Become a News for Jax insider. Sign up and sign in.
You're watching This Week in Jacksonville on Channel 4.
And joining us right now here in studio, Ken Babbie, owner of Jacksonville's professional baseball team, the Jumbo Shrimp. Ken, congratulations.
Thanks, Kent.
Season opener at home this week. And I guess the first question would be just, how does that feel after not even getting to play in 2020 and then pandemic restrictions last year? It was kind of normal this last Tuesday night, right?
It was incredibly normal. I mean, when those gates opened and we saw those fans come in with their shining faces, not behind masks, and our, and our staff greeted them, it just felt like life was back. And yes, we had a wonderful season last year and it was great to be playing baseball following a 2020 without baseball. But boy, baseball is certainly back, back here in Jacksonville.
So help people understand what you had to do, not just last year, but also 2020 as the owner of a franchise who didn't play games that year. You were still trying to be engaged in the community.
You know, it's interesting. Sports teams have these sort of perceptions as these, these large businesses. But at the end of the day, we're really small, medium-sized businesses. We've got 30, 35 employees, full-time employees. And when the 2020 season was canceled, we had to pivot and think about how we were going to adjust, just like everybody else. And for us, that meant no baseball, no games, no tickets to sell, no hot dogs, no beer. And so we pivoted and our incredible team, led by Harold Craw, our executive vice president, said, look, we're going to, we're going to run a business disruption plan, just the way any other company would. And we're going to program the ballpark safely with socially distant events. We ran movie nights, we ran bingo nights, whatever it was, birthday parties, high school baseball games, we did it. And it allowed us to stay afloat and continue to provide a great experience for our fans.
Want to show some video from Tuesday night here and just the people getting out. Even before the game, there was this kind of activity center out on the street in between the arena and the baseball grounds there. Why go through all of that? Why is that helpful? How does that meet, I guess, the mission of what you have for the Jumbo Shrimp?
So Kent, when I, when I grew up, opening day was a holiday, right? In fact, it was like the one day my parents let me skip school. We'd drive up to Baltimore. Washington didn't have a team then. And we'd drive up to Baltimore and we'd go into Camden Yards and it was a celebration. And that celebration wasn't just at the ballpark. It wasn't just with the players on the field. It was in the streets. It was, it was on the, on the city sidewalks. And so we said, look, why don't we start a tradition here? And David Ratz deserves incredible, incredible credit for creating this, but this is actually the third year that we've done this Main Street Festival, you know, right downtown. And it's super exciting to get people down at the ballpark, get down there early to get the feels, to smell the smells and to get excited for the start of the season.
So Tuesday night for opening night, game time, 7 o'clock. But that started out on the street a few hours before.
Hours before. Yeah, I could hear in my office at 2 o'clock, the kegs rolling, people, the vendors starting to get excited. That's how I knew that it was here. It was time for baseball.
So I want to ask you about some of the things going on in Jacksonville. There's some plans for development in the sports complex, complex area, including at the shipyards there. Do you have hopes that they will make changes on the business side for the Jumbo Shrimp?
We're, we're really bullish about downtown and particularly really bullish about what's happening in the sports complex. Obviously, you know, we're supportive of everything that the Jaguars are doing to continue to grow, you know, as they, as they can contemplate their future. You know, more to come from the Jumbo Shrimp, but we really see ourselves right on the cornerstone of a lot of this development that's happening and, and will play a very active role in advocating for it. You know, a baseball team is nothing without its community and nothing without its fan base. And, and this team has been supported so wonderfully, certainly these last five or six years that I've had the pleasure of owning it, but for many, many decades before that. And so we see ourselves as stewards to continue that development downtown and to be seen as more than just a baseball team, to actually be a real anchor here in our community.
So one of the changes I note, since the ballpark was completely full back there, you know, 2019 and then that season off, the Jumbo Shrimp are now the triple A team. How is that different from a fan's perspective? Does it help them because, hey, that guy I'm watching today could be in the majors tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, we were proud to be the double A affiliate of the Miami Marlins and in the Southern League and everybody knows the rich history of baseball here in Jacksonville. We've always felt, and I have always felt, that Jacksonville was a triple A market. We belong there. One, the city has earned it, the team has earned it, and, and the community has earned it. And so we now, instead of competing against smaller markets, compete against Nashville and Memphis and Charlotte and Las Vegas and cities that we believe are right there on the cusp of Major League Baseball. And that's who we are and Jacksonville has earned its way. And it's not the first time we've been in triple A, of course. We were for one year, the triple A affiliate of the Jacksonville, excuse me, we were the Jacksonville Expos for the triple A affiliate of the Montreal Expos. And, but we're here to stay now and really proud to be the triple A affiliate of the Marlins.
Kent, just kind of one minute left there, but what's, what's next for what you do? Because you're so innovative and always trying to find another way to engage fans and make it, as you say, fun, family friendly, something?
Affordable family fun. Thanks, Kent. You set me up beautifully. I've got to take you everywhere on the road. You know, in our business, you have to be innovating every day. I mean, I wake up first and foremost and I see myself in my role as an entrepreneur, but the real work is done by our front office staff that thinks and has to cultivate. In baseball, you've got 150 baseball games. And so unlike other sports, unlike football where you program it, you know, six, eight times a year, we're out there every single night. I said to our staff, we finished opening night, we all high-fived, we felt great about the evening. And then we said, guys, gates open again in 12 hours. Go get a few hours of sleep.
We better be ready. Well, we were certainly as a city, ready for the beginning of baseball season, always[1626.76] ready to talk to you. Ken Babbie, thanks so much for your time today.
Thanks, Kent. Appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Best success for the season.
Thanks, pal.
All right. So thank you for being with us today. An historic week with the confirmation of the first black woman to the Supreme Court of the United States. So Brenda Priestley Jackson joins us next week. And we're going to talk about Katanji Brown Jackson's confirmation. We'll also have Paul Renner, future Speaker of the House in Florida, ahead of the special session. This Week in Jacksonville airs each Sunday morning this time. I'm Kent Justice. Thanks for watching on air on Channel 4 and CW17 and online at newsforjax.com.
See why every day more people are choosing News4Jax, Northeast Florida, South Georgia's number one source for local news.
People have been wondering.
What's that into Lindsay?
But it's really what Lindsay's gotten into. Planet Fitness. And now through April 14th, you can join for only $1 down and $10 a month. Join now and feel spectacular for $1 down, $10 a month. Cancel anytime. A hurry. Deal ends Thursday, April 14.
When the I-Team investigates, results happen.
Do you feel bad taking money from people?
I don't know how much money you saved me, but at least $400.
Very, very, very happy. Thanks to you guys. You started it.
Fighting for what's right, standing up for local families.
The governor signing into a law. Something that came out of an I-Team investigation.
You guys did a great job.
Hey, y'all, you know, jump right on it.
I-Team get results.
The News4Jax I-Team. Uncovering, exposing, getting results.
Take five, you stay in your car because we're faster than you think.
Oil change is done.
Gosh, I don't even have time to stretch my legs.
Guess you have to do it at home.
Guess I'll have to do it at home.
Take five, the stay in your car, 10-minute oil change.
After a car crash, the big insurance companies will try to downplay your case. They say things like, "It's only a fender bender," or "It's just a herniated disc." I worry that some law firms fall for this BS. Not us. There's only one Morgan and Morgan.
Think premium can't be capable? Introducing the first-ever AT4 lineup. Premium and capable. That's professional grade from GMC. Step up to GMC with 0% financing on these GMC models. We are professional-grade GMC.
People have been wondering.
What's that into Lindsay?
But it's really what Lindsay's gotten into. Planet Fitness. And now through April 14th, you can join for only $1 down and $10 a month. Join now and feel spectacular for $1 down, $10 a month. Cancel anytime. A hurry. Deal ends Thursday, April 14.
The I-Team on News4Jax. Uncovering, exposing, getting results.
The following is a commercial program. It was produced and paid for by the advertiser.
Hello and welcome back to another edition of Come Back Stronger. I'm Dana Brooks of the Facic Brooks Law Offices. And I'm joined today with my law partner, Jimmy Facic. Jimmy, this is an exciting show. We've got a woman on here who has done what they all do, and she's taken something that she didn't think she would even survive. And she's found some kind of inside fortitude to use that bad experience and create a foundation to come back stronger and help other people come back stronger. We've got Janelle Irwin on today and Humble Bragg. She's in the Club 25 with me. She's one of the 25 women you need to know in this town, according to our newspaper, The Tallahassee Democrat. She's at a preceding class, but she has experienced something nobody ever is prepared for. No one wants it, of course, but you just don't know what you can do until you're faced with it. And that is a very serious illness in her child.
The worst nightmare of any parent is to find out that your child has leukemia.
Right.
And that's exactly what Janelle went through. And she had to tackle it head-on. And they overcame. And finally, her child is doing fine right now. But through this process, she created such a great comeback story.
Yes, she did.
Because she created the Hang Tough Foundation. It's this, the pain that she went through inspired her to help other people who are going through the same thing. And that is a critical, awesome element of every great comeback story.
Every one of them. And this wasn't, you know, a blip in the radar. This wasn't something she just had to get through in a surgery and that sort of thing. Not that that's not enough, but this became part of her life. And since she lived in it and she breathed it and she was with it every day, she knew that she had to do something to help other people dealing with the same problem. So we're going to come back with our interview with Kimmy Hogan and Ms. Irwin right after this break. Some of my clients are just like, "Wow, you actually believe me." You know, it just takes somebody believing in them and saying, "I will stand up for you and I will go seek it out."
It was a slip and fall case. And so in a slip and fall case, you have to have evidence that the defendant knew that the dangerous condition existed for a length of time. I didn't have the evidence, but my client was injured. And he definitely slipped on something on the floor. So I said, "You know what? Nobody else is going to take this case, but I'll take the case." And I went ahead and filed the lawsuit. And then the next thing you know, I get the video from the store and low and behold, I could tell that the employee at the store literally walked right over the dangerous condition, literally minutes before my client slipped and fell on him. And so I ended up settling his case. He said, "We're going to be friends for life." I love it.
And we are back for Kimmy Hogan's first segment of her interview with Janelle Irwin.
Thanks so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me today.
So let's start at the beginning of your story. Tell us where you're from. Give us kind of a background on you.
Yeah, I was born and raised in Topeka, Kansas, so in the Midwest, and married my high school sweetheart. We graduated from Kansas State University, got a degree in family life and community services, which will come into play later in my story. My husband and I moved to Colorado right after we got married, lived there for a wonderful four years, and then relocated to Tallahassee, Florida at the time with just our one-year-old daughter, Kaitlyn. And so now we've been in Tallahassee for almost 10 years.
Oh, wonderful. Wonderful, wonderful. So you are now the Director of the Hang Tough Foundation.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we want to hear the story of how you got there. And of course, there was a big event in your life with your son Grayson.
Yes.
So tell us about Grayson and tell us about what his birth was like and everything that led you to creating the Hang Tough Foundation.
Yeah, we had our son Grayson in 2012. He was a neurotypical developing, hitting all his milestones, perfect little pudgy, cute little baby. And about at 10 months old, we started noticing some strange symptoms. Took him to the doctor four times and kept saying, "Something's not right, something's not right." But every time, we kind of kept going back to, must've just been something viral, must've been chickenpox before he got vaccinated.
What were the symptoms like?
The first one, he had a really high-grade fever, 104. And they just kind of said, "Hmm, something viral, we'll just blow it off." Then he got a rash that looked like chickenpox. And so they said, "Must've just been something viral." Took him back to follow up. It had kind of gone away. And they said, "Well, just keep an eye on things." And then the last time I took him in, he was very lethargic. He just was not himself. And I had started noticing bruising on his arms in weird spots. And then it was that morning that I actually changed his clothes, took his little onesie off, and I could see where my fingerprints typically pick him up.
Oh, wow.
In a bruise form on his little torso. And so when I took him back to the doctor's office that afternoon, it was like, "Something's not right." And of course, I had been there several times, so I think they thought I was a little crazy.
Go mama go, though. Go mama go. You know your babies, right? You got to advocate for them.
And so I did. I said, "Something's not right. We got to figure it out." And as soon as the doctor felt his spleen and liver, she kind of pulled her hands back and she said, "Oh, we're going to go get you some stat blood work really quick. We're going to check for things like mono. But you're right, something's not right. Things look enlarged and not right." And I actually left to take him to get the lab work. And I called my mom, who was a nurse back in Kansas, and I said, "Mom, they're checking for leukemia." And she said, "Did they say that?" And I said, "No, but I just..." I said, "They're going to tell me Grayson has leukemia this afternoon." And my mom said, "Don't, don't talk like that." You know, she hung up the phone and told her people on staff at the nursing unit. She said, "My grandson's getting diagnosed with leukemia today." We just, we just knew. And sure enough, two hours later, got the phone call to go back to the doctor's office and to not bring the kiddos, but to have my husband meet me there. And they gave me a lot of information that didn't make much sense at the time, other than get in the car, go to Shands as soon as possible, they're waiting on you. And so we packed up. And by 9:00 PM that night, we had the formal diagnosis that he had infant T-cell leukemia.
That's terrifying. It's making me tear up, just think about it.
It was the craziest, most earth-shattering moment of my life. And I mean, by the time we got to the hospital, he was vomiting blood. And Shands told us that had we not made it to the hospital within about a two-hour timeframe, we probably would have lost him that day.
Wow.
So.
How long was that from when you first noticed things to when you got to Shands?
Three weeks.
Wow.
Three weeks. A very rapid, rapid, and that's why they call it acute lymphoblastic leukemia, because it happens very fast. And by the time he got diagnosed, a typical child would have a white cell count of 10,000. You're considered, if you're diagnosed over 50,000 of a white cell count, high risk. Grayson was 378,000. So he was seven times the high-risk rate at the time of his diagnosis. So he was...
Wow.
He was not doing well. It was already in his central nervous system by the time we caught it. But it was such a blessing when we arrived at Shands and we were in the ICU. I said, "What are you telling me?" I said, "What are our chances here?" And they said, "We don't treat numbers. We treat children." And that was their way of saying, "We're not going to tell you what we think the numbers are." And a year down the road, I did get them to tell me. I said, "Come on, what'd you really think?" And they said their medical team had met and they gave him a 10% chance.
Wow.
Of making it.
So what happened when you got there? Did they spring into action with chemo or what did they do?
It was insane because when we got there, they already had everything laid out, ready to go because they had seen the numbers from the lab work. They knew it was more of emergency than we even realized. So when we walked in the door, they said, "Are you the Irwin family?" And we said, "Yeah." And they had a room ready and everything was laid out. And that was the moment that it hit me, "Oh, this is, this is not looking good." They already had an ICU room reserved for us, whole nine yards. And they started trying to explain things, which, of course, you're emotional. I remember going in the bathroom and just splashing cold water on my face, hoping I would wake up from the nightmare. But once, once we got to a room and kind of got things quieted down a little bit, they started laying out our options. And pretty much the option was, we can do the typical treatment that we would give a child with leukemia. But they were very candid that they did not think with his age and with some of the other preliminary things like the white cell count, that that would do anything. And then they threw out this stack of this clinical trial. And they said, "This is your other option. And we feel this would be the best route to go. And we need paperwork signed by tomorrow at noon on what you're going to do."
Wow.
And so we did a lot of praying in that amount of time, a lot of, you know, just looking at my husband saying, "What do we do?" Not knowing much about the clinical trial, but what we ultimately decided was, God has blessed incredible people on this planet with medical knowledge, and we decided to trust the experts. And so we signed that paperwork for that clinical trial. And Grayson is a living, breathing testament to that.
And now nine years old.
Yes.
Well, we have to go to commercial break, but when we come back, we're going to talk more about Grayson and about the Hang Tough Foundation.
Perfect. Thanks.
Wow. I can't even imagine.
Yeah.
Can't even imagine going through that. But what struck me most about it, and I was thinking about this, is what do you do when you're in the midst of tragedy? And how do you generally handle that? And what she did was, she got in the car, she went to Shands, she put one foot in front of the other, she prayed about it, and she ultimately decided to trust the experts, trust the people that have been through this and they know everything about it. And that's what got her through it.
Yeah. She trusted, but she also, you know, felt very convicted about, "This is the right thing to do. I want to throw everything I have at this. I want to give him the best shot." And she didn't let, you know, concern about the odds.
Right.
Or any of that inform her decision. She's like, "No, I made it, I made this commitment. My child is going to get well and he's going to get through this." But so many times, whenever our world turns upside down, the way at least women I know like to handle that is to try to do something that makes you feel in control of an uncontrollable situation. And that's whenever you start looking out and say, "Okay, what kind of resources do I have? Who can I talk to? Where's the research on this? What are the options?" And, you know, you've just got to keep a level head on your shoulders. But that is almost impossible to do whenever you're trying to support your spouse, your other children, you're worried about, you know, bills. How am I going to be away and take care of all these day-to-day obligations I still have to everyone else in my family?
Which is exactly what she had to go through. And that's exactly why she developed the Hang Tough Foundation that helps people that are going through the exact same thing.
Yeah. I can't wait until the second half of this because she talks about things that I don't think any of us ever consider when we think about having a child who needs 100% of our attention. You really don't think about the fallout on everybody else in the family.
Yeah.
And what is being missed. You don't think about how your child is being taken out of a mainstream environment and treated like, you know, something very unique and special to them. And you want them to survive it, but you also want them to thrive on the other side of it, not always see themselves as weak or, you know, not as healthy as the other children. So I just, I just like her story because she helps us think about things that we probably never consider. But we'll be right back after this break for the second part of our interview.
I went to lunch with one of my former clients the other day, and she's doing great. She took the money from her settlement and she started her own company, buying and selling vehicles. Which is really cool because she was in a car crash and then needed a new vehicle. And so now she's able to help other folks out.
Most of our clients, they find that one of the most frustrating things is dealing with the vehicle.
Oh, well, losing your car can totally disrupt your life.
You can lose your livelihood over it. If you can't get to work or, you know, what's the worst thing with our clients is we're just trying to help them get well, but if they can't get to the healthcare that they need, you know, that's just another setback.
One of the typical things about a comeback story is you take the pain and the struggles and the challenges that you've been through and you use that as the fire that kind of motivates you to do something good for other people. And so I love that because now our client did exactly that, like literally to the T.
Hi, and we are back for Kimmy Hogan's second segment of her interview with Janelle Irwin and the Hang Tough Foundation. You're going to learn more about it right now.
So tell us about the treatment that Grayson received.
So Grayson underwent a two-year treatment process. The goal of the clinical trial, and this is direct quote from his doctors, was that they were going to give him four times the chemotherapy dosage that they would typically give a child. And so what they told me is in the first six months, they were going to cram extra in. And they were going to, quote, "Push him as close to the point of death as possible and then bring him back to retrain his body to produce good blood cells." And so that first six months was a year worth of treatment crammed into six months. And that reduced the average treatment for a little boy with leukemia is three years. But ours was only two years. So the first six months were really, really hard. By the time he turned two, he only weighed 16 pounds. He was very sick, very frail, didn't get to learn to walk till he was two because he just had nothing to, to use, no energy. But he was a champ. He soared through treatments in ways that they didn't think were going to be possible, to be completely honest with you. Most of the kids that went through the same clinical trial, the percentage was that 68% of them passed away in the first two months of treatment because they pushed too hard. So praise God that Grayson was an outlier to that.
Yes.
And it was a very long, hard two years. The first year, they did not allow us to leave the city limits of Gainesville because he was so high-risk. They wanted us very close. So I had my husband and my daughter living back here in Tallahassee. And then Grayson and I stayed at Shands or at an apartment that we had to rent to stay within the city limits. So it was a very long, hard two years. Glad to say that we're on the other side of that.
Yes. And so you have created the Hang Tough Foundation, which is a foundation that helps families that are going through things like what you went through with Grayson.
Exactly.
So tell us, tell us the mission of Hang Tough and how you came up with the idea for it.
So Hang Tough is a local nonprofit that serves families that have children with chronic life-altering illness or special needs. What we found during our journey was that no matter the diagnosis of a child, it affects the family. It affects the pockets of the family in very similar ways. So the caregiver relationship, the marital relationship, the siblings. And so myself and Michelle Hart, another mom who had been through a cancer journey with her daughter, we just started dreaming. We got out notebooks and paper. We spent a lot of time on the phones when I was at the hospital, dreaming of how we could support families. And when I was at Shands, I had all these things right at my fingertips, child life specialists, social workers and things like that. But when I did get sent home back to Tallahassee, I was all alone. And that was a very scary place to be. And we, we just started dreaming about how we could fix that. And so, we created Hang Tough Foundation with, actually, Grayson still had six months left in his treatment, because we thought it would be this very slow start to get an organization started. And we knew how great the need was, but we had no idea. So, we are seven years old now, and we are serving 872 heroes, which are children with diagnoses, and all of their family members. So, we're serving over 3,000 people on a regular basis.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
And that's all people in Tallahassee?
So, we serve Leon, Jefferson, Gadsden, and Wacola Counties.
Okay.
But 75% of them are Leon County. So, if you really start looking at how prevalent it is that families are undergoing the unthinkable with their kids, it's mind-blowing. You can go couple houses down from you, and you can find someone.
So, how do y'all get funding to be able to do what you do for these families?
What I love most about the Tallahassee community is this is a very giving, very generous community. Everything that we have done so far has been grassroots. Local individuals and local businesses that have fallen in love with our mission and brought it to life, legitimately brought it to life. We don't get any state, federal funding yet. Maybe one day down the road, we will. But right now, it is just the heartbeat of people in our community-
That's amazing.
-that have kept it afloat.
That's amazing. And tell us a little bit about the different services that y'all offer and the different support groups that you have.
Absolutely. So, we have 10 programs and services that we offer our families that are all completely free to any of our hero families, is what we call them. And they vary between support groups, parents' night-out opportunities, where parents can get a break, and have medically-trained staff to be able to watch their kids, so they can actually go breathe for a little bit. We do sibling support activities, because that is a huge component of the family that often gets overlooked. And I saw that firsthand with my daughter, who was three at the time. And we don't mean to kind of push that child to the side, but when you're trying to keep one alive over here, it just happens. So, we spend time putting those kids on a pedestal, making sure they know how important they are to their family unit. We do family fun events, getting these kids to do normal things that we take for granted every day. Getting to go to a movie theater, getting to go to Skate World, getting to go to Fun Station, and do those things that are otherwise not available. Tutoring services, school supply drive, an experience with Santa. We kind of dabble in it all, but what is fantastic is, it's not just my experience and Michelle's experience, because we're local. Many of these programs and services have come about from the families that we serve, saying, "Hey, this is something we need." And then, we say, "Let's do it. Let's find a way." And then, we can support them in that manner.
That's, it's just amazing. It's amazing.
I often say, "Out of dark circumstances come really great opportunity if you look for it." You've got to find the good in the situation. You've got to find the way to turn it around. And if we dwell on the horrible stuff that happened, we can't discover the way we can really serve others.
Yeah. Well, you certainly did. And I'm just, I'm amazed, right? Because you're sitting there at Shands' with your son, and you're thinking about, "How can I help others?" It's just incredible.
You know, and my parents are thrilled that I finally used that degree that I got back in the days. So, it's really cool to see it all come full circle and to find that this is my ministry. This is my heartbeat. And I'm just so grateful that it's what I get to do every day as my job.
So, for people who are watching, if they want to help the Hang Tough Foundation, what can they do? How can they find you?
So many ways. Pop on our website, hangtoughfoundation.org. Check us out. We're always looking, of course, for donations to keep our mission alive. We are primarily volunteer-run. We only have three staff members. So, any kind of volunteerism, come our way. We need you desperately. And then, of course, if you're a family that can use services, it is quick and easy to sign up on our website, and we would love to welcome you to our big Hang Tough family.
That's awesome. Well, in closing, do you want to leave any advice for families that are maybe struggling with medical issues on behalf of their children?
You know, the biggest thing I learned, and it took me a few months in to get there, was I had to train myself to look for the good in every day. There would be nights I was laying on the incredibly uncomfortable couches in my son's hospital room, but I would force myself at the end of every day, "What was good today?" And some days, it was simple, as finding someone that smiled at me in the hallway when I was breaking, that they didn't even know their smile was what carried me through to the next day. Other days, they were very easy things to find. But it is something that I got away from for a while, and just in this last year, I've circled back to that, that every night I go to bed, and "What was good in today?" And I think if we could all take that time, we would find that this world is not as awful as we think it is. And that there's so much positivity out there, and that we can be that positivity for others.
Well, you are an inspiration. Thank you so much for sharing your story with us.
Glad to be here.
Well, that was very touching.
"Out of dark circumstances come really good opportunities if you look for them." That was my favorite quote. That was so-
Sounds very Jimmy Faci to me.
Yes.
How do you think she was able to do that, though? That's pretty dark.
Yeah, it was as dark as it gets. You're losing your child. You're literally, they're putting chemicals in your child-
To try to-
-that is going to put-
Put them on the brink of death.
-him to the brink of death. So, here's Grayson, two years old. Oh, my gosh, so painful. But how did she do it? She trained herself to look for the good in every day.
You know what? What came out to me was attitude. You know, it's, no matter what you're dealing with, your attitude about it is going to pretty much inform how it goes for you. And you think to yourself, "How do you find something good whenever you're spending two?" And in some cases, like she said, with the average case for a young child that age, a male child would be three years of that. You know, how do you ever, how do you get the fortitude to go through every day? How do you see some light at the end of the tunnel? And how do you not feel like everything else in your life is suffering? I mean, it's just an enormous pressure and amount of responsibility. But to find the way to see the goodness, and this is something else, smile at people. When you pass people in the hallway, I don't care where you are. If you're walking into your building, smile at people. Make eye contact, because you don't have any idea how important that might be to somebody who needed it more than anything that day.
100%. What I love about her story is the fact, it supports my theory, which is that our challenges in life guide us to become the highest and best version of ourselves, so that we can contribute the most to making this world a better place. That is exactly what she has done. And it's very exciting to watch. Now, after she's, Grayson has overcome this challenge, and she's developed this, she's developed this foundation that's helping so many people. It's very exciting to see that. But it's also, when you're in the midst of the challenge, that's when it's important to take that little good in every day and to see it.
And she's continuing to give it forward. I can't wait to come back after the break, and we'll wrap up. But this is an amazing story with so much goodness to share with the world. So, we'll be right back after this.
They might show up at your door with a check for $500 to try to get you to sign on the bottom line. They will do anything they can to save the insurance company money. And if you hire a lawyer and come back stronger, then you are going to be dealing with them on a level playing field.
You know what I tell my clients is that "Come back stronger" is not just a slogan. It's a game plan.
Yes.
Because in order to get you fair compensation, we have to prove to the insurance company that you are doing everything you can to get better.
Yes.
And when you do everything you can to get better, if you're still hurting, then insurance company, you better pay, because we want to make you whole. So, it's not just an idea of, "Let's make you better after this horrible thing happened." It's a plan to make you better.
And I think in coming up with that plan, it makes us better lawyers, too.
100%.
Because I think having that game plan helps us achieve more and be more successful for the client.
And we are back talking about Janelle Irwin and what she's done to change the lives of so many children, little heroes, and then also their caregivers and their family through her Hang Tough Foundation. But to me, what was really poignant was when Kimmy Hogan, our law partner, at the first part of the interview, she said, "Go, Mama, go." And that's, you know, an ode to listening to yourself and your instinct when you know something is not right with your child. And doctors go to a lot of training. They see a lot of people and a lot of patients. But nothing, nothing can replace a mother's instinct, when she just said, "This is not right."
That's right.
And she's like, you know, "This child is bruised. This child is not doing well. I haven't had a million children, but I just know." And so, I really applaud her for listening to her instincts and just not, you know, kind of poo-pooing the concern and putting that in the back of her.
Well, you see this all the time. As a medical malpractice lawyer, you see how patients need to be their own best advocate.
Yes, they do.
Because the doctors have a lot going on a lot of times, and they don't see all the details. They don't know your body. They don't know your child's body in as much detail as you do. And so, if you feel like something's wrong, if you feel like something is wrong with your child, you have got to go in there and fight to make sure that you get down to the bottom of it.
You know, and something else she talked about was, "My parents are so glad I finally am using that degree." It's a family, life, and community. But I just have this deep belief that the universe gives you what you need-
Yeah.
-and puts you where you're supposed to be. And that degree probably got her through. And she relied on a lot of education she probably thought was useless or wasn't going to serve her. And it probably was what was the thing to get her through it. What final remarks do you have today before we wrap up this fantastic show?
All I have to say is, it was a great show. And join us next time as we come back next week with another awesome comeback story. And if you know somebody with a comeback story, then let us know so that we can talk to them possibly about being on the show.
And follow us on social media. We'll see you next time.
And you know what the insurance company offered him? $5,000. He's completely, he's completely blind, and they offer him $5,000. Ask him to sign a release.
To a lot of people, especially when they're hurting, and when they're down, and when they're vulnerable, $5,000 is a life-changing amount of money. And they're not looking at the value of what has been lost. They're not looking at what it would take to make that person whole, which is our job. That's our job. Their job isn't. Their job is to save the insurance company money. And they look at this person, and they go, "Hmm, I bet $5,000 would get your full attention." And they come in, and they dangle it with a settlement release, and then, once you sign it, you're done. You can't come back to us and ask us to wave a magic wand and make that go away. That can't go away.
My client didn't accept the $5,000. We took him all the way to trial. We got a $5 million verdict.
The proceeding was a commercial program. It was produced and paid for by the advertiser.
When a man with a lifelong injury was told by his first attorney that his insurance maxed out at $10,000, he wanted a second opinion. We found hidden in the fine print, $450,000. He got every penny. Far and far.
Next ET, we are unpacking it all with the Kardashians.
We're just living our best lives.
What you haven't heard from their reality returned.
It's kind of as simple as that.
Plus, Jada Pinkett Smith's first red carpet appearance since the Oscar slap.
We'll figure it out.
Then, our exclusive with CMT Awards hosts Anthony Mackie and Kelsea Ballerini.
I just get a whole nother level of nervous.
Next ET, Monday at 7 on Channel 4, the local station.
Debit or credit, which one a thief steals could leave you on the hook for more money that you'll never get back? Then, Marshmallows, your new hack against egg inflation? And why you have less time than last year for taxes, Monday.
Easy 20-minute meals for less than $20.
Stock shelves à la vodka.
Oh, my goodness.
Monday at 10 on Channel 4. The following is a commercial program. It was produced and paid for by the advertiser.
The following presentation is paid for by J.D. Melberg Financial.
Are you concerned about future tax hikes affecting your retirement income? Are your retirement accounts protected from a downturn in the stock market? Are you confused and perhaps overwhelmed by all the contradictory financial advice out there? Do you want to ensure that once you retire, you stay retired and never run out of money? Well, stay tuned for J.D. Melberg Financial's Guarantee Your Income for Retirement, where we'll share with you the products your stockbroker may not want you to know about. During this next half hour, we will share strategies with you on how to make up to 40% more income during your retirement. That's right, up to 40% more income. How to get 100% more income in retirement for home or assisted living healthcare costs for up to five years. 100% more income. How to earn highly competitive interest rates. How to receive bonuses that range from 5% to 15%. And do all of this and more without putting your money at risk in the stock market. Over 14 million people have reached out to J.D. Melberg Financial for help. And over $3.5 billion has been entrusted into our next-gen annuity strategies. We are the place people turn to for retirement income guidance. J.D. Melberg Financial is an accredited Better Business Bureau member and has earned an A-plus rating, and has an excellent rating from TrustPilot, with hundreds of verified clients leaving real reviews. J.D. Melberg Financial has earned a coveted spot on the INC 5,000 list of America's fastest-growing private companies for seven years. We have been featured on CNBC, CNN, ABC News, PBS, Yahoo Finance, The Wall Street Journal, and The Washington Post. So, stay tuned and learn how to get a copy of our book, Guarantee Your Retirement, absolutely free. And now, your host, Blaine Gray.
Hi, I'm Blaine Gray, and if you're thinking about retirement, the next 30 minutes could change your life. Even if you think you've got it all figured out, I want you to hear what I'm about to say. Everything we've been taught about retirement planning has changed. And if you don't understand what happened, your retirement could be at risk. Stay tuned, because today we have Josh Melberg with us in the studio, founder of J.D. Melberg Financial, one of the nation's largest independent financial service firms, to help explain just how the financial world has changed. For Josh, empowering people with the knowledge they need to make more informed financial decisions for their retirement is more than just a career. It's a full-on passion. So, let's meet the man himself, Josh Melberg. Welcome, Josh. It's great to have you here today.
Thanks so much. It's great to be here.
Josh, what do you think are the biggest concerns people are facing in retirement?
There are two, basically. Running out of money in retirement and how to pay for medical expenses.
And why is the baby boomer generation facing this uncertainty?
Well, the world has changed, Blaine, right under our feet. Pensions have become a thing of the past, and 401Ks have been unreliable. And the stock market has become a scary place. In the old model, we judged our retirement security based on our value of our portfolio. But with stock market bubbles, it's just not a safe bet anymore. And the volatility of this market and interest rates at rock bottom, that could be here for a very long time. Where are you supposed to go for income? How do you protect the principal you've got for a lifetime? Meaning, if you're married and you're 65, chances are, one of you will live to be 95. And studies show that if you're educated and you have money, you can live even longer.
So, where can someone put their money, where it's not just protected from loss, but where it will provide the one thing retirees need most, reliable income? And not just reliable income, but guaranteed reliable income that will last their entire lives, no matter how long they live?
The answer I came up with, Blaine, is strategies using next-gen annuities.
Let J.D. Melberg Financial show you how next-gen annuity strategies can offer you bonuses that range from 5% to 15%. Show you how you can earn an 8% rate each year for future income, and how the principal, bonus, and growth are all protected from stock market declines, and how income is guaranteed for life. Let us show you how to get 100% more income for home or assisted living healthcare costs for up to five years. You may have the ability to roll over your current 401K or other retirement plan without paying taxes to secure all these guarantees and so much more. Call now to get your free retirement guide package that has all of this information and more. It includes three guides. And if you call right now, we'll include a free copy of our book, Guarantee Your Retirement. This book features the number-one mistake that retirees make, and you don't want to make it. The book is free while supplies last, and the information in it could protect you from running out of money in retirement. But the only way to find out how is to call right now and ask for your free retirement guide package.
I've developed strategies. Why? Because I love my job. I get to sleep better at night, knowing I help people have permanent income for the rest of their lives, and helping them live the retirement of their dreams.
I'm sure that's music to a lot of people out there who are really concerned.
People are concerned. And if they don't understand how the world is changing, they may have something to be concerned about. The thing is, they don't have to. Why? Because of something I call next-gen annuities.
That's what we're going to learn about today, right?
Exactly.
Well, Josh, that sounds like just what the doctor ordered. So, here's what we're going to do. We have real questions from people with real concerns about their retirement. Are you ready to give them some real answers?
You bet.
Okay. This is a question from Jill from San Diego. Jill asked, "There are so many different kinds of annuities out there that I'm confused. Can you help me understand the differences?"
Well, Jill, there are four distinct different types of annuities. And keep in mind, the primary reason to even consider an annuity is because you want income or you want principal protection with growth opportunity. The first type of annuity is called an immediate annuity. These are the old-fashioned ones, the kind where you've lost control of the money, the traditional types where you put a lump sum of money with an insurance company, and you get income as long as you live. The second type is called a fixed annuity. You know exactly what you're going to get. It has a minimum where it grows by, and it grows tax-deferred. And when it matures, you can pull it back out and do something else with it. The third type of annuity is a variable annuity. A variable annuity goes up, and it goes down with the market, and they have risks. You can make money, but you can also lose money. These are the annuities that are known for their fees, sometimes as much as 4% to 6% on average per year. The fourth type of annuity is called the index annuity, also known as the fixed index annuity. These are designed for people looking for principal protection as a main priority with growth opportunity. I like the uncapped index annuities. And the way it works is, if the market goes up, you participate in the gains. You don't get all the gains, but if the market goes down, you can't lose your interest, and you can't lose your principal. Then, there's the breed of annuities I call the next-gen annuities, which I personally think are the best retirement vehicles of all time.
Wow, that was a great answer. And we're going to get a lot more answers to a lot more questions just like that. Stay tuned, because this is information you need to make informed choices about your retirement.
Don't wait another minute. Call now for your free retirement guide package. That's right, free. There's no cost, no obligation, and no credit card needed. Just pick up your phone and call our experts right now. We're standing by day or night to take your call. This package has three free guides. That's right. Our top three guides all in one package for you for free. We'll prepare your very unpersonalized free retirement roadmap. This roadmap shares strategies that can guarantee your income and account value, earn bonuses that range from 5% to 15%, earn guaranteed rates for income up to 8%, and get 100% more income for home or assisted living healthcare costs for up to five years. You'll also get a free copy of the Next Gen Annuity Strategies Guide. This guide reveals our proprietary strategies that only 1% of financial professionals have access to, and can secure you up to 40% more income. Select from over 1,000 annuities offered by leading insurance companies with highly competitive rates. Yours free for calling right now. Also included in this package is our annuity do's and don'ts for baby boomers. This guide explains how to get increasing income in retirement and guaranteed lifetime income for your surviving spouse, and what annuities to avoid because of high fees and high risks. And last but not least, we'll include a free copy of our book, Guarantee Your Retirement. This book has the number-one mistake that retirees make and reveals how to protect your retirement savings from this pitfall. This entire package is free while supplies last, and the content in it could protect you from running out of money in retirement. Call right now and ask for your free retirement guide package and free book.
Welcome back, and thanks for being with us. I'm Blaine Gray. And if you're thinking about retirement, stay tuned, because today we're talking about retirement income planning, steps you can take to not only protect your assets, but the opportunity to get increasing income for life. I'm here with Josh Melberg, founder of J.D. Melberg Financial, one of the nation's largest independent financial services firms. Josh is showing us ways his next-gen annuity strategies can provide people with a guaranteed, potentially growing stream of income, allowing you the assurance your financial needs will be met in retirement. be met in retirement, and insurance that can last for the rest of your life. Josh, in our last segment, you said people usually purchase annuities for income or for protected growth. Can you only choose from one or the other?
Actually, that's the great thing about next-gen annuities. You can have both. Reliable income and not just reliable income, it's guaranteed income for life with protected growth. And we're going to talk a little bit about that later.
Okay, great. So I have a question from Robert in Florida. He asks, "Can you explain in plain English what an annuity actually is?"
Well, Robert, an income annuity is an agreement between you and an insurance company. In exchange for a one-time payment, the insurance company is legally obligated to provide you with a regular, predictable, reliable income stream. It's basically a money-for-life contract. But like what we said earlier, there are a lot of different types of annuities. So what Next Gen has done is they put them together in a way that's groundbreaking. Blaine, let's show our viewers the John example. It really helps clarify what we do.
Let's roll it.
This is John. He wants to retire in 10 years. He puts $250,000 into a fixed index annuity with an income rider. He then receives a 10% bonus that immediately accelerates his future income. He secures his retirement by using a next-gen annuity strategy. His income value will continue to grow at an 8% annual rate while he's still working. Once John retires, his next-gen annuity will provide him with $25,000 each year for the rest of his life guaranteed. Plus, if he needs more income for home healthcare or assisted living, that income could increase by 100%. From $25,000 to $50,000 for up to five years. John did all of this and guaranteed his retirement income by utilizing J D Melberg Financial's next-gen annuity strategies.
Pretty clear when you put it that way.
It is. And you can also get them with spouse continuation, which means the spouse can continue to receive the same income guaranteed for life, and that income is potentially tax-free. With next-gen annuities, they took the features from the media annuity, guaranteed money for life, the fixed annuity, and features of the uncapped index annuity, which offers market upside without the downside, and put them into one. And what that means is, is you can take advantage of the market gains without risking your money in the stock market.
You know, I think this is the perfect time for this question, Josh. It's from Karen and Frank in Indianapolis, and they say, "The stock market frightens us because it goes down so suddenly. Doesn't feel safe, but it always seems to go back up, so we stay. What should we do?"
Well, I say to Karen and Frank, is that all depends on how old you are. If you're in your 30s, yes, the stock market will go back up. But if you're close to retirement, the stock market could always go back down. And I can tell you, on average, we see the stock market recession every seven years. So if you're going to retire, let's say in your 60 or 65, that might be four recessions that you're going to live through.
We've got wars, crazy interest rates, global economy uncertainty. Is it really possible to retire comfortably and with confidence in today's world?
Blaine, it is possible. Next-gen annuities are a great way you can recession-proof your retirement.
Let J D Melberg Financial show you how next-gen annuity strategies can offer you bonuses that range from 5% to 15%. Show you how you can earn an 8% rate each year for future income. And how the principal, bonus, and growth are all protected from stock market declines. And how income is guaranteed for life. Let us show you how to get 100% more income for home or assisted living healthcare costs for up to five years. You may have the ability to roll over your current 401k or other retirement plan without paying taxes to secure all these guarantees and so much more. Call now to get your free retirement guide package that has all of this information and more. It includes three guides, and if you call right now, we'll include a free copy of our book, Guarantee Your Retirement. This book features the number one mistake that retirees make, and you don't want to make it. The book is free while supplies last, and the information in it could protect you from running out of money in retirement. But the only way to find out how is to call right now and ask for your free retirement guide package. Don't wait another minute. Call now for your free retirement guide package. That's right, free. There's no cost, no obligation, and no credit card needed. Just pick up your phone and call our experts right now. We're standing by day or night to take your call. This package has three free guides. That's right, our top three guides all in one package for you for free. We'll prepare your very unpersonalized free retirement roadmap. This roadmap shares strategies that can guarantee your income and account value. Earn bonuses that range from 5% to 15%. Earn guaranteed rates for income up to 8%. And get 100% more income for home or assisted living healthcare costs for up to five years. You'll also get a free copy of the Next Gen Annuity Strategies Guide. This guide reveals our proprietary strategies that only 1% of financial professionals have access to and can secure you up to 40% more income. Select from over 1,000 annuities offered by leading insurance companies with highly competitive rates. Yours free for calling right now. Also included in this package is our annuity do's and don'ts for baby boomers. This guide explains how to get increasing income in retirement and guaranteed lifetime income for your surviving spouse and what annuities to avoid because of high fees and high risks. And last but not least, we'll include a free copy of our book, Guarantee Your Retirement. This book has the number one mistake that retirees make and reveals how to protect your retirement savings from this pitfall. This entire package is free while supplies last, and the content in it could protect you from running out of money in retirement. Call right now and ask for your free retirement guide package and free book.
In the past, couldn't you just take 5% of your retirement out each year, and you're fine?
One of the biggest mistakes that people are making is keeping the retirement savings fully vested in the stock market. If you want proof that this is not the right thing to do, just look at what happened in 2000 to 2002, and again, in 2008. This is the S&amp;P 500. That's because of the volatile returns, the great losses in the market, and the way people lost drastic amounts of money. This is an average return of the S&amp;P 500, does not include fees, commissions that can run as high as 3% per year, inflation, and taxes. If you take in consideration inflation, you probably lost money over the market over those years.
What if the next 15 years mirror the last 15 years in the stock market?
What we can do for you is replace all those negative years with zeros. In other words, if you get rid of all those losses, and all of a sudden, your compound becomes much greater, and you may not have to put off retirement for another 10 years. People with uncapped next-gen annuities didn't have any losses. As a matter of fact, they continued to enjoy gains. They have the potential to experience double-digit growth in 2009, when the market went up.
That's incredible. How is that even possible?
Because next-gen annuities, you're not actually in the stock market. The value of your annuity grows in relationship to the index. That means you can take advantage of the market gains when the market goes up, because your value of your annuity goes up. And then, and here's the best part, those gains are locked in. You don't get all the gains, but you do participate in the potential upside without participating in the downside. And that's the key. Uncapped market upside without the downside. Let me show you how this works. The uncapped index annuity linked to the S&amp;P 500 with a participation rate would have experienced growth, while experiencing a lot less volatility, steady growth without any large drops. Looking closer at the year-end results for the uncapped index annuity, it would have provided positive returns in the good years, while the S&amp;P 500 price index experienced two bear markets during this period, from 2000 to 2002, and again, in 2008. During both bear markets, the S&amp;P 500 price index suffered severe losses. Now, Blaine, I say zero is your hero when the market crashes.
Wow, I am sure there are a lot of viewers out there thinking that it's time for them to take control of their retirement strategy right now.
It is, Blaine. It really is. And that's the whole point of this. People have to realize and accept that no one can do it for them. They have to get the information for themselves. And that's where J D Melberg Financial and Next Gen Annuities come in. We can help.
Well, this sounds like a perfect time to take a break and let people know more about what they can do to take charge of their retirement. Now, when we come back, we're going to meet some real people who have used next-gen annuities to achieve the retirement they've always dreamed of. So stay with us, because the retirement you protect may be your own.
Let J D Melberg Financial show you how next-gen annuity strategies can offer you bonuses that range from 5% to 15%. Show you how you can earn an 8% rate each year for future income. And how the principal, bonus, and growth are all protected from stock market declines. And how income is guaranteed for life. Let us show you how to get 100% more income for home or assisted living healthcare costs for up to five years. You may have the ability to roll over your current 401k or other retirement plan without paying taxes to secure all these guarantees and so much more. Call now to get your free retirement guide package that has all of this information and more. It includes three guides, and if you call right now, we'll include a free copy of our book, Guarantee Your Retirement. This book features the number one mistake that retirees make, and you don't want to make it. The book is free while supplies last, and the information in it could protect you from running out of money in retirement. But the only way to find out how is to call right now and ask for your free retirement guide package. Don't wait another minute. Call now for your free retirement guide package. That's right, free. There's no cost, no obligation, and no credit card needed. Just pick up your phone and call our experts right now. We're standing by day or night to take your call. This package has three free guides. That's right, our top three guides all in one package for you for free. We'll prepare your very unpersonalized free retirement roadmap. This roadmap shares strategies that can guarantee your income and account value. Earn bonuses that range from 5% to 15%. Earn guaranteed rates for income up to 8%. And get 100% more income for home or assisted living healthcare costs for up to five years. You'll also get a free copy of the Next Gen Annuity Strategies Guide. This guide reveals our proprietary strategies that only 1% of financial professionals have access to and can secure you up to 40% more income. Select from over 1,000 annuities offered by leading insurance companies with highly competitive rates. Yours free for calling right now. Also included in this package is our annuity do's and don'ts for baby boomers. This guide explains how to get increasing income in retirement and guaranteed lifetime income for your surviving spouse and what annuities to avoid because of high fees and high risks. And last but not least, we'll include a free copy of our book, Guarantee Your Retirement. This book has the number one mistake that retirees make and reveals how to protect your retirement savings from this pitfall. This entire package is free while supplies last, and the content in it could protect you from running out of money in retirement. Call right now and ask for your free retirement guide package and free book.
If you're thinking about retirement, the next 10 minutes could change your life. Even if you think you've got it all figured out, I want you to hear what I'm about to say. Everything we've been taught about retirement planning has changed, right under our feet. Pensions have become a thing of the past, 401ks are unreliable, and the stock market has become a scary place. Well, Josh Melberg, founder of J D Melberg Financial, one of the nation's largest independent financial service firms, is here today. Welcome back, Josh.
Great to be here.
Well, in a minute, we're going to hear from some of the people who've actually used next-gen annuities to achieve the kind of retirement they've always wanted. But first, let's recap. We've talked a lot about how your next-gen annuity strategies offer ways to get reliable, guaranteed income for life without losing control of your money. And you've taken us through next-gen annuity strategies that can get you increasing income to fight inflation. But I know you've saved the best for last. Now, some of our viewers at home are really trying to figure out what makes sense for them. Can you provide some insight on next-gen annuity strategies? Is it possible to get income and growth in this economy?
It's impossible to find one annuity that has it all. But with our next-gen annuities, we take the best of each type of annuity. Two of the most important concerns retirees have is outliving their money and paying for medical expenses. Well, Next Gen takes care of all of them. You get guaranteed income for life that can increase with inflation. On top of that, if you need home healthcare, you can double your income without even having to be insurable. Imagine combining this with social security maximization, so a large portion of your income can be tax-free. Then you have your growth opportunity, capital that is protected from market volatility, and control of your money, all without risking a dime in the stock market.
Let's show the example with Tom and Mary.
Here are Tom and Mary. Tom wants to secure his retirement by placing his $400,000 IRA into an annuity utilizing a next-gen annuity strategy. He then receives a 10% bonus that immediately accelerates his future income. By using a next-gen annuity strategy, his income will continue to grow at an 8% annual rate every year. Once he retires, Tom's next-gen annuity strategy will provide he and Mary with $36,000 a year for both of their lives. That's $3,000 a month, no matter what, even if Mary lives to be 105 years old. And if either one of them ever needs to pay for medical expenses, for home healthcare or assisted living, that income could increase by 100% for up to five years.
So in this show, we've really addressed the two biggest concerns retirees have. Number one, outliving your savings. Well, we just said that with Next Gen, you get guaranteed income for life for you and your spouse, no matter how long you live. And number two, paying for medical expenses. Well, with Next Gen, you can double your income if you need home healthcare.
Both bites at the apple. Does investing in the stock market do what we're talking about here?
No.
How about bonds?
Nope.
Any mutual funds?
No.
Any investment that you know of in the world that can get growth opportunity, not lose money to the market, and get guaranteed income for you and your spouse?
Uh, no. I think we have time for one more question. Now, Peter from Austin is asking if he has to wait until he retires or if he can roll an old 401k retirement plan into this.
Many people think you have to wait until you retire to do something with your largest nest egg, which is your 401k. It might be your Thrift Savings Plan or your 403B. You don't have to wait until retirement. Let's say you have $500,000 in your 401k, and you want to move $400,000 into a self-directed IRA. We can help you do an in-service rollover to next-gen annuities without paying any taxes.
Let J D Melberg Financial show you how next-gen annuity strategies can offer you bonuses that range from 5% to 15%. Show you how you can earn an 8% rate each year for future income. And how the principal, bonus, and growth are all protected from stock market declines. And how income is guaranteed for life. Let us show you how to get 100% more income for home or assisted living healthcare costs for up to five years. You may have the ability to roll over your current 401k or other retirement plan without paying taxes to secure all these guarantees and so much more. Call now to get your free retirement guide package that has all of this information and more. It includes three guides, and if you call right now, we'll include a free copy of our book, Guarantee Your Retirement. This book features the number one mistake that retirees make, and you don't want to make it. The book is free while supplies last, and the information in it could protect you from running out of money in retirement. But the only way to find out how is to call right now and ask for your free retirement guide package.
But I sense that people might be feeling that Next Gen is just too good to be true. I think it's time our viewers meet some people who actually use next-gen annuity strategies to achieve the things we've talked about today.
I think that's a great idea. Let's roll it.
We just wanted to be sure that our money would last for the, you know, the rest of our life without having to go back to work.
My husband passed away, and I knew I had to look for a financial advisor.
It's a question of establishing trust with people. I mean, you work very hard for your money.
I came across the advertisement for J D Melberg, and right away, I felt a comfort.
I think a lot of people, when they go to a financial advisor, they feel like they're going to be pressured. We didn't feel that way at all here. It was more of an education.
J D Melberg Financial was able to help me.
They were great. They, they, they really got into the nuts and bolts of the products and brought us the understanding that we felt we needed in order to commit.
They've accomplished everything I wanted accomplished towards my retirement.
I found the person that I trusted right from the get-go.
We feel real good about it, to be honest with you.
It was a great relationship.
It was a great experience.
Don't wait. Take control of your retirement today and call J D Melberg Financial right now. Thank you, Josh.
Thanks for having me, Blaine. It's been a pleasure.
The preceding program was paid for by J D Melberg Financial. The proceeding was a commercial program. It was produced and paid for by The Advertiser.
The Florida heat will be here before you know it. Call the pros at J and W Heating and Air and get a preseason AC checkup for only $47. Avoid costly breakdowns this summer with our multi-point AC checkup from your neighborhood experts.
Right here, right now.
With the guaranteed offer, you can receive the strongest cash offer in the industry. Sell your home for maximum profit without the hassle of ever putting it on the market. With the guaranteed offer, there are no showings, no open houses, no stress. Go to markspan.com to get a guaranteed offer on your home today. Go to markspan.com to get a guaranteed offer on your home today.
Crime tourism. Foreign thieves who come here as tourists to sightsee and to break into homes. Home invasions by burglars from foreign shores. Next in sudden edition.
Monday at 7:30 on Channel 4, the local station.
Got a thermostat acting up? Warmer weather is right around the corner. Call the pros at J and W Heating and Air and get an AC checkup for only $47. Scan the QR code to schedule today and keep your system running smoothly all season long.
Right here, right now.
Welcome to News 4 Jack's Plus. Stream hyper-local news on your smart TV anytime, free. Easier than ever to connect live with the local station.
The following is a commercial program. It was produced and paid for by the advertiser.
Auto accidents happen every day. And at Hatfield and Hatfield, we know that every step matters. Call us today at 446-9990.
The Josh and Monkey curriculum is not just a fun, interactive children's book. It's strategically designed to help students and families reimagine just how engaging reading can be, and you'll foster critical thinking at the same time. Josh and Monkey coaches young readers to go beyond calling words.
Welcome to the Strengthening the Local Church Conference. Churches from all around the country come to Jacksonville, Florida for Strengthening the Local Church Conference. This conference was designed for small churches 100 members and under. Classes will be provided to address all vital areas of church ministry. Registration is free for the senior pastors and five key leaders or more. Join us July 13th through the 16th, 2022. To register, call 904-779-0101 or visit thechurch320.com.
But had I done away with them, I couldn't have got to them. I'd had some time to think before I took that action. When you don't make no provision, you have time to think. If it's dealing with women, if it's dealing with men, if it's dealing with drugs, if it's dealing with crime, if it's dealing with whatever it is, don't make provision for that because that's what gets you in trouble. Because you got to work on what now, your discipline, self-discipline to modify. Romans 8 says, mortify the deeds of the flesh. Kill the deeds, kill the deeds of the flesh. When you work on killing the deeds, your life will look more like a Christ-like.
The pandemic has come to an end, and it's time to get back to church.
It's time to get back to church, amen.
And the saints, we need to get back to worship. You know, we need to get back to worship, getting back, getting out, going to worship fellowship. Not just looking at it as, well, you know, something we used to do. Amen. The Bible says forsake not to assemble yourselves, forsake not to come together.
It's time to get back physically in church.
If you're online watching me by streaming, listen, this is the time to get back to church. We only talk about that because that sound like, okay, this is religious. I'm not talking about religion. Religion is religion. Sanctification is sanctification. You believe, but you ought to sanctify yourself, separate yourself, set yourself apart. You are a peculiar people. We are not like the world. We have no business desiring the same thing that the world desires. The flesh want what it wants. It's already a mess. It doesn't need no assistance to be a mess. It's a mess. So if you keep feeding it, it's going to get the best of you. The flesh, yes, the flesh is a mess. It wants what it wants. It wants to sin. It wants to do wrong. It wants to walk in error. It desires sin. But the payment for sin is death. The wages of sin is death. That's the end result of sin. So the flesh, that's what it desires to do. It works, sin works in your members. Romans 7 chapter, in your, in your body. It has a language of its own, it has a feeling of its own, and it want to do what's pleasing to it. The problem is what pleases the flesh brings death. What pleases the flesh brings death, all these things. Now, you hear me saying about being drunk and, and smoking and getting high, all that, all that? All that stuff, that stuff of the devil, that's what the flesh wants. It wants that fornication. You all know what fornication is? You don't even talk about fornication in the church no more. You know why they don't talk about it in the church no more? You know why they struggle with fornication? Because we got, the women are saying, ain't no men in the church. So they're psychologically justifying sleeping around with other men that ain't in the church. Y'all don't want to talk about that. Fornication is when two people that are not married are sleeping together. Did y'all know what that is? That's fornication. Adultery is when you're married and the other person is sleeping outside, sleeping with somebody outside the marriage. Y'all got that? That's what fornication is, and that's what adultery is. That's the work of the flesh. It brings destruction. You got to be clean. How long you got to be? I've been waiting a long time. Some of y'all ain't been waiting that long, so stop lying. Just stop lying, keep looking straight ahead. Ain't nobody know I'm talking to you. You know, because saints be trying like they, they living so holy, you know? They just acting like they really, so, listen. You're not a special kind of sinner. You're the same kind that I was. This ain't right, y'all. I gotta close. Because only in church do we, we talk, we get away with all this crazy stuff. And it makes us psychologically unstable. We pretending here, and y'all know what I'm talking about. Y'all know what I'm talking about, pretending. And so we wonder why some people seem like they off in church because the real world they live in don't have nothing to do with church. So they come here and hear the Bible and hear all this truth. And like, I can't relate with that. When I go out and hear the devil's on my back, and I want him on my back. Then you come out to church, somebody say, oh, you shouldn't do that. You shouldn't do that because that ain't right. You shouldn't do it. And then you go back out there, and they told me I shouldn't do it, but I want to do it. It just tastes so good to me. And all that's true, but you don't understand what's happening to you, then you won't deal with it in a disciplined manner. Because you don't know to stop making provision for the flesh. Stop providing opportunities for you to mess up. I had to learn the difference. Had to put myself in a little strict environment, more disciplined environment, and get around folk that were serious about the things of God. I stopped hanging around the weak Christians. You know when somebody don't want to truly do right when they join a church? Let me tell you all this here, and then I'm gonna close. They join the church and they gravitate to the weak people. And for y'all generation, you join online stuff and you join around with these, with these preachers. And I'm gonna say this here because you're looking online and you're gravitating to the weakest preachers. They don't live right. They don't mean no right. They struggling, and all they preach about is grace, 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 grace. Because they don't have no discipline to live right themselves. You're saying that because, no, I'm saying it because it's the truth. And I know that that's not the quality of life that God wants you to have. There is better for us, but we have to choose better. And to choose better means you taking a personal interest in your spiritual growth. Not everybody else, you. I didn't learn to do better until I took a personal interest in my own spiritual growth. And when you in the ghetto, it's easy to sin in the ghetto. I know it's easy to sin anywhere, but in the ghetto, it's really easy. They have made all kinds of provisions in the ghetto for you to sin. All kind, you in the ghetto, they, they have, you, you putting your lights and stuff, light bill in someone else's name. And if you're in a ghetto like I was in, we knew how to go up the pole and turn the whole street lights back on, the whole lights in your house back on. If they come out and turn somebody's light off, within 24 hours, them lady's lights be back on, and they ain't paying nothing. Okay, y'all, y'all, okay, that's how y'all playing it. Come on, stand up. I'm gonna close. I'm stopping. They say, what, they say, was it public service? What, what we call up there? P S E N G, public service. And they said, they done been through, they done been through already. How many, how many got their lights turned off? There's four or five of them. Oh, we can go up the pole on that one. So how did we learn how to do it? The guy coming out to turn it out told us how to do it. Who, what guy? The public service guy showed us how to do it. Okay, y'all. I'm not gonna finish it, but at least I started. At least, at least y'all know y'all heard something on learning to live right. All the works of the flesh, all the works of the flesh, you got to deal with that. I'm not the guy, I'm not preaching on y'all, you know, telling y'all. He didn't talk about that. If you're doing that stuff, you need to stop it, you know? And how you stop first? Stop making provision for it. That's, that's internal honesty. I knew good and well them guns was under my bed because I put them there. Now, I done got saved, months done went by and everything. And that one time, they provoked me, I went and got them. But had I done away with them, I couldn't have got to them. I'd had some time to think before I took that action. When you don't make no, when you don't make no provision, you have time to think. If it's dealing with women, if it's dealing with men, if it's dealing with drugs, if it's dealing with crime, if it's doing whatever it is, don't make provision for that because that's what gets you in trouble. Because you got to work on what now, your discipline, self-discipline to modify. Romans 8 says, mortify the deeds of the flesh. Kill the deeds, kill the deeds of the flesh. When you work on killing the deeds, your life will look more like a Christ-like.
Welcome to the Strengthening the Local Church Conference. Churches from all around the country come to Jacksonville, Florida for Strengthening the Local Church Conference. This conference was designed for small churches 100 members and under. Classes will be provided to address all vital areas of church ministry. Registration is free for the senior pastors and five key leaders or more. Join us July 13th through the 16th, 2022. To register, call 904-779-0101 or visit thechurch320.com.
Praise the Lord and God bless you today. This is Apostle Stan Williams sitting here with my lovely wife.
Lady E Denise Williams, co-pastor.
Amen. Listen, we want to take a few minutes out to give a special invite to our Strengthening the Local Church Conference that we have every year in, right here in the city of Jacksonville, Florida. Listen, we're just going to talk about and let you know what we have waiting for you. It's going to be an amazing time. You're going to have an amazing experience, and your church will be strengthened. But Pastor Lee, I want you to talk a little bit about the part that you play in the classes that you're involved in, and talk us about that.
Well, like you said, it's going to be an amazing time, but the whole week is set up so that your church can be strengthened, not just the pastor, not just the leaders, but the entire church as a whole. Because we're asking senior pastors, dear pastors, and five of your key leaders to come and be a part of this conference. So what we have, we have special classes. What classes that I guess every church or small churches need to be strengthened in. We have classes on prayer. We have classes on building a great, strong children's ministry because, you know, our childrens need to be ministered to as well. Teen ministry. We have classes on media, on how to produce media programming, of radio and TV. Because all pastors, small churches are not on TV yet. But they could be on radio. So it's about strengthening your church where you are, every area. We have hospitality, how to handle your pastors, how to handle members. We have administration, how to even answer a phone and take a message. Yeah, so that your pastor gets the message right the first time. So those are all the things that we have. And then we have our leaders that have been trained, that have been with us in ministry for many years. They will be the actual ones that will be hand-on, you know, helping other leaders that come. But the biggest thing, I think,